An abbreviated agenda this morning.
This morning.
One day, started at four. Um, we can remove chamber membership from the agenda because the finance committee had it in the budget. And so they're just, they're just processing that. So we don't need to talk about it. We had already approved the budget. So when Carol gets back, she'll be taking care of that. Just taking that off the agenda. Things happened in between when we published them. So. All right. So, community tourism and event position. Um, to the best of my knowledge, there have not been any additional meetings on this topic since the one that Mandy and I attended. And I gave you guys a briefing on. Um, so the, the question that we need to discuss, and this is a fairly, I think, a simple one. Um, is in the, the meetings and in the correspondence, I expressed a personal opinion. That I felt that the LDC should run the RFP, one, there should be an RFP. But the LDC should run that RFP and that we would manage that position. Um, that was my personal opinion. I think Pam and Mandy will say, I said it multiple times. It's my personal opinion, but we as a board have to discuss what we want our board's position to be. Um, so Mandy and Pam, you were both on the meeting. Anything you saw the correspondence of me trying to bring people up to speed? Anything you would add to that?
Um, I can't think of anything at the moment.
Yeah, I, I, I really don't. My, I do have a separate question, but I think it plays into it and it's probably for Dan. Rumor is the town's pulling, wants us to pay for this.
The town will pay for it, but you're not going to pay for it now as an unbudgeted amount.
So basically, let me, let me play back. So make sure I understand what you just said. It would be, we do an RFP. We make a recommendation on who we want to be the successful bidder on that RFP. And then the town would say, and I'm going to make this up. It's thirty thousand dollars. Um, and the town says, yes, we agreed to that thirty thousand dollars. And then you would give us the thirty thousand to pay that.
Well, I think it's a split between the village and town.
It's sixty forty. Because this is off-cycle budget.
Yeah.
We're not willing to pony up money now.
Yeah. And I, and honestly, we wouldn't know how much to ask you for.
So you're not willing to pull it when we award the RFP?
We are not.
There you go. That's the answer.
It's off-cycle budget. We're, we're now pulling funds that we didn't budget for.
In the budget year.
In the budget year.
But this was a thing that you and the village, that town and the village wanted, like, I, as far as I know.
Don't get me wrong. We're in full support of the position.
So how, why wasn't it budgeted for?
We get our budget starting in September.
So, so Dan, I guess the question would be, when we had the meeting with the joint meeting of the town and the village and the LDC back at budget time. And you guys cut our budget fifty percent as, and the IMA is that the village will do the same. Um, Paul repeatedly said, if you have something that you need money for, you need to come to us.
As a, as a sense of urgency.
Right. So you don't think that this position is an urgency?
I'm just conveying what.
Yeah, no, no, no. And you, not you, not you specifically, but you collectively of the board. They don't think that this position is.
No, we don't. I mean, i- is it needed? We agree that it is. You have the funds here.
Well, we won't if we do what the economic development or the marketing destination study, that's what that money's earmarked.
Well, that's another discussion to have. But we're on this discussion right now. Our board is saying, and, and our auditors will say the same thing. Tina got involved and said, why would we pony up more money when we've already funded the LDC and they have access to those funds?
Well, I think our decision is made then, because if we're not going to get money, we're not doing it. I mean, Dan, that would be, that would be, we had a strategic plan.
I'm saying you're not going to get money. You're not going to get it for this particular round of payments. We're going to budget again in the fall. And at that point.
But it, would it be any good for us to have a community promoter after the tourist season? I mean, we don't hire them until September?
You're, you're missing my point.
I, I think I am. I'm trying to understand.
They'll pay us in September. They'll pay us at the next.
Our point is, you make the, the funds for the town. I don't know where the village is. The village budget is coming up. They're in a different scenario. But the town, because our budget is annually, in January, we're saying, we're not going to come out, pull money out of our coffers now for this position. Come September, we'll budget for that position for next year.
So you would give it to us in March of next year? Because that's when you give us the money.
Yeah. So we collect the taxes.
So that would be next year. So we would, we would eat the cost for this year's pay.
Correct. But it's with a, but it's with a trade-off of, after that, the next round, it would not be our money. The decision is, we all agree that we need the position. And, and I understand to everybody agrees we should have the position. Where it goes is a separate discussion, but we need the position. I, I don't know if we could fund both, but if we, but if we funded it this year. Then it's budgeted and then it's off our plate fall one. That's based on the predication that we will get our full amount for the following year. Because right now we're working at a fifty percent.
Except for past practice, if we pay for it for a year, then they'll say past practice you pay for.
Well, so there is that.
No, but again, I'm just telling you what our.
Is that why the town wants the LDC to help have it for us? Because we'll power.
The town's position is hands off.
No, that, no, that's. When my, I'm sitting in the chamber meetings with Al. He was adamant that the town wanted the LDC to run, supervise, I'll say supervise, supervise this position instead of the chamber. Does the town want this, the LDC to supervise this position because we have it in the budget and the chamber doesn't?
We are comfortable with either or. I don't think Al's statement.
Okay, that's not.
That is not what he said in the meetings.
I don't think that speaks with the entire board. Our board's position is, position is needed. We're a hundred percent in favor of it. If it's housed here at the LDC, that's fine. If it's held at the chamber, that's fine.
That, that was the discussion we had in the non-form meeting, which is kind of, everybody kind of was in fine agreement that we should have the position, one. And two, nobody really cared or had any preference where it resided. It seemed to kind of coalesce. It made sense either the LDC or the chamber.
Right, yeah.
But from a town and village perspective, and I don't want to put words in Dan and Dan's mouth, but they really, really did not care. In fact, they did not want to be in that business, but it probably resided in one of the.
But I have a question. So if it came to the chamber, we had funded this year, next year you'd be on the, being merciful.
Does the chamber have the money to fund it this year?
I'm not speaking for the board. I'm not speaking for the board.
I just, I don't know what your brother's like.
And also, we are going to support wherever it goes because we really need it. We suffered last year tremendously because we had no money. So to go through a whole nother season.
Right. Okay. That's what I wondered. And if there is, maybe if it's not even the full amount, which we don't know exactly what it is, maybe there'd be some kind of split this first year.
So.
It's really important.
So what if we consider making part of the RFP for that position, a study requirement? So they take on the responsibility of doing the marketing destination economic survey, whatever we want. And, and so, you know, we use the funds we were going to commit to the destination study. Part of the duties then that that individual do, does at that point is work on that piece of it.
I would love that. I think where I'm, I may have some reservations is, um, there's pros and cons to someone who really knows local and someone who knows more global. I think the promotional position, someone who knows local would be a benefit, right? Because they know everybody, they know what's going on, they know who to talk to. Where, where someone doing a strategy that has a broader view of the world, right? Would bring new ideas in. So I'm not, I'm not sure it's the same unless we had the marketing destination person hire a local person to be the promoter. That might be a way to do it to get the best of both worlds.
But then it's only going to be like a year, right?
Well, the marketing destination would, yeah, I mean, if, you know, in, in a perfect world, I think we would do a one-year, just, you know, like, kind of, we've done with Scott, right? It's a one-year with the, with the ability to up it for two more years.
But I think we probably have that right person in our midst. You know, I mean, Warren comes from outside. Jim is from outside. They've come here with that expertise. Not necessarily them in particular, but, you know, bringing somebody in from outside to tell us what, what the town wants, I think that we're going to end up with.
See, I'm not sure it's what the town wants though. And again, maybe I'm, I'm coming from having, you know, heard more things about this. But the idea of what are, what are other communities doing? How are they attracting visitors? You know, the old, if we build it, they will come. And we're going to build a whole lot on Club Street and who's going to even know? And who should you, you know, who should we contact? Like who, you know, what are the voting organizations that we should be saying, hey, did you know we have transitional docs? Do you know this beautiful community? So, so there's a whole, how do we market? That somebody who's like in a network of those kind of people would know. And I'm not saying the person we had do the sales call, right? He was a sales call. That's what I asked him to do, to talk about what it could do. But, you know, there's other companies out there that might have that knowledge. I'm just trying to, how do we balance sort of local and more of a global view?
I think, personally, I think they're separate positions because it's very separate responsibilities and taskings we're looking for. The development study and marketing destination, that is a whole niche in itself. And the marketing person markets. And this, the marketing person is going to need to be working with all the, everybody, you know, especially the chamber, but everybody in town. Where, and I know this, the economic person will also, but that's just like a, interviews here and there to find out what we do and why we do it. And how that fits into the bigger picture where the marketing person's here, they're staying here, they're going to be doing. I think, I think it's too separate unless it's going to be a full-time person too. And that's, the other thing is, I think the plan was to have a part-time person.
For the marketing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, the way the original always built it was, it was like a salary. Well, this would be a contract position, right? It would be, this is what we need. This is how, you know, and, and give us your, give us your price, right? How much does it cost to do this?
Is this a situation where, and again, still knew all this, is it like a priority thing? I mean, to me, the event promotion person is the most important priority right now, even more so than the economic development, the market destination.
I, I think the.
I think that is really, really critical.
I think it's critical too. I think where I'm coming from is the marketing destination is the blueprint for what the promoter does. So when you're talking about the kind of, you know, at least the kind of money and time we were talking about for that position in the original draft that was floated. It, um, you know, it's not a big buck position, right? You're not going to get somebody who's got a master's degree in, in marketing and, and destination management. And, and it's like, how does somebody bring us the fresh ideas, right? That, that community's, twenty years ago, somebody said Clayton should do an antique boat museum. People would have said, what are you talking about? But it's a great idea. What's our antique boat museum, right? What besides people who come in a boat or fish, what other things can the people to the community? Honestly, I mean, we can keep asking the people in the community, but we've asked those questions a thousand times. I don't think, I haven't got enough data. We need somebody to come in with creative ideas.
And that's what a marketing destination or economic development would do.
That's what I think. It's an outside person, in, in, you know, and even when you finally get a contract with them, I'd say, you know, here's all our data, right? It's like, don't, don't do it again. Don't ask us one more time what we think. Community is going to get tired of it and not see anything done. I'm sorry, somebody on the phone was trying to talk.
I was just going to say, I, I was just going to say, this is, like, we've talked before. If you're going to do this and the money for their, if you're going to do like a consultant position kind of role, if that money's included in the chamber budget. We could apply for the Market New York, which is up to fifty thousand dollars that can pay for your marketing. But you need a budget of a hundred thousand dollars to do that because it's a fifty fifty. Um, but if you're going to include whatever you're paying for that position in the chamber budget. It would put them over the hump to apply for a Market New York grant. So it would be next cycle. So it would be this May, June, July. The grant would be due, would be awarded in December. So it could be funding for twenty-six. But it's a way to get fifty thousand dollars in grant funding to help the chamber.
And that can only go to the chamber? That couldn't go to the LDC?
I would have to look into that for you. I think it's for only chambers that are state-registered chambers. I, I'll have to double check. I mean, it's not out, but I can look at last year's grant requirements.
I don't think we've used the tourism council to its fullest resource.
Oh, the Thousand Island Tourism Council. No, I don't think so either.
I think part of the problem is we don't have somebody to link with them.
Yeah.
And that's what this marketing, that event marketing person could do.
Yeah.
I think.
Charles Swenson and, well, what's the director tonight?
Oh, um.
You know it too. You can.
Corey, Corey, yeah, Corey.
Yeah. I mean.
It was, it was a C word and I've had a lot of C words today.
Um, I, I, me personally, I'm not a fan of studies. I think, I think you could get. An existing study from pretty much anywhere along the river and it's going to be the same thing.
Yeah. I, I respectfully.
I don't think they have them though.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, right now, we're kind of dancing and conflating because they are related. The community promoter, the events promoter break. Then the discussion on either marketing or economic development. Now, they are intertwined, something like that to a degree. But I'm not sure we're ready to go ahead. We, we have enough great ideas, I think, right now. We have probably asked the community and different things. Geez, we put them into our strategic plan, pretty decent strategic plan. Now we can just take whatever it is prioritizing things, which we have, and start kind of throwing them out. And so the question becomes, I don't think it's really so much the economic development vice the marketing destination. I think it's more of a question of, do we, do we want to spend the money on whichever direction we go? And, and what is going to be the value-add for that? Vice, get the community promoter and start tackling some of the basic meat potatoes. From, right, that, and then maybe the marketing destination, if we think that's the route because we have community firm, or we go to economic development, or none of the above. Other, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what either one's going to tell us that we don't recently already know.
I think, honestly, yeah, it absolutely does. I think, I think what it is, is I think we need creative. Ideas on how to bring more people to the community, both. And I think to live is not going to be a problem because we all live here and we know why we live here and it's, it's a good place, right? But I think to get different types of tourists, more tourists, so our businesses don't close in the winter. So that they can make it by when all the snowbirds fly south. I just, I, I just don't think we have enough creativity. And, and I don't want to say global because that's, that's too broad, but broad-reaching ideas, right? I mean, I, I just don't think we have it. And I'm trying to think of, how do we get that? And, you know, maybe, you know, maybe we do an RFP and we get a promotion person who's great. But my fear is that they're going to be a person who knows Cape Vincent and they're going to like, you know, rinse, wash and repeat. Now it's wash, rinse and repeat. It's been a long day.
Yeah, you know, I'm not, the ideas are there. It's just a question. Our, our problem is, not, not a negative thing, okay? Our problem is, it's a volunteer board. And what, what we, it's, it's really, it's the time to roll up the sleeves to go ahead and execute the work. And that could be something in somebody's wheelhouse of experience, or time to go ahead and, you know, research it. Or we pay someone, like Scott's a great example, you know, we pay someone with expertise to go ahead and get after whatever problems that we're going to go ahead and do. I'm not, I'm not sure it's the ideas. I think it's really, we lack capacity to address the things, some of the things that we kind of know. Now, you can certainly debate, uh, we're going to go ahead and prioritize, uh, high-speed internet and cell phone. Because that's the thing, the infrastructure to attract people to more work and live. Or are you going to prioritize things like, uh, the ideas of like, uh, the, or the touristy stuff? And then attract those people to whatever those things are. And you certainly could have the discussion. But I really think our issue is more capacity right now. And it's not, that's not denigrating anybody's work here, but we're all having, you know, day jobs. Um, so.
But the immediate issue is that we need that person to start promoting Kate.
Yes.
And that's not a big hump to get over if we do the RFP. Get that person in here. And then, I think this group, we need to, we haven't, has anybody looked at the strategic plan since we, it was presented? Okay, you guys have. Um, but could we start focusing on, um, I guess, looking at that and clarifying where we want to head? I think one of the things that could fit right into this tourism person is the website, because that's the community website.
Yeah.
And that could also track one of our big things off our strategic plan. So.
I mean, I think we would have to, I don't, I mean, we could try in the RFP to say you have to have website development skills. You know, or, or they could at least maintain it, right? Like we had Joe do the LDC, Casey maintains it.
Right. And maybe he would do this one if we RFPed him to develop.
Yeah, I think he would. I mean, he did the lighthouse. He's done, um, the food pantry.
So I think that's something that we could move forward with and have this person be the POC. And they would be the one getting all the connections for all the community partners and.
Yep.
Programs and, yeah, so on. So I do think that fits. And that would also move our strategic plan forward.
It would.
Where the village owns this position, I assume they'll.
On this, oh yeah, we want the position, yes.
And you can, and you can budget it, an upcoming budget.
We can. We don't know what that amount is, but apparently we can. I mean, no, it's, we have to come up with the money, whether we use things around. Um, and does the village have a feeling where they want the position to land? Um, there was some sort of, maybe a, there wasn't a strong feeling either way. Maybe a couple of people thought it should be at the chamber. But, um, there's a total willingness for it to go to the LDC. And I think that might have been the majority. That's, so it's very interesting because what you guys are saying, your boards are saying, is not what was said on the call. The call was, it was very adamant that the village wanted it. I felt like Christine wanted it.
One person.
Yes, I know. So, but she was the speaker. So that's why, okay. So there, that, that makes me feel better. I don't, I, I also feel like, the, how I felt coming into this meeting was the village and town were like mom and dad and you guys have to pick where we're going. And that's not a fair place to put the LDC in. So that's what I was like, this is going to be, because that, that was, that was.
I understand. That's, that's why the LDC was formed.
It is.
We're trying to get some of this off the municipal plate.
No, I understand that. But when one person is one, one entity is saying it has to go to the LDC and the other entity has to go to the chamber. That's what was portrayed. And I think Lori also kind of felt that way from the chamber's perspective. It was very one-sided, one, one and one.
Right, we thought that, yes.
Really? I, I think Al thinks he should be here. I have no ink with it being here.
So that's, that's good to know that the boards really have no.
And remember, we're, we're having conversations with the board about this because this is an unbudgeted item for us.
Right.
Right? This came from the, from the village. And, and then, and the one meeting that was held, the town and the village were like, we need this, we need this, we need this. And so I'm like, but, but we didn't budget for this. And by the way, our budgets were, was cut fifty percent. And the chamber's in the same situation. The budget was cut fifty. So it's like, okay, well, you guys have to, we have an agreed-to strategic plan that both entities agreed with. These were the right priorities. And now all of a sudden, it's like, well, no, we have this other thing that's important and we agree it's important, but we're not going to give you any more money. So it's, it's, you know, that's why we have to keep involving you guys because of the money, right? And obviously your valuable expertise. I mean, it's not like we don't care what you think, but, but, you know, you're our funders. Yeah.
Can I make a proposal then, basically for consideration? Dave from my, I think it's pretty clear right now for at least this budget year, definitely from the town's perspective, because it wasn't budgeted. And, and how they budget is slightly different than ours and the flexibility, I would argue. Um, they cannot do it this year. Okay. And I think the village is counting the same vote.
Hmm, no, I get the, I get the different impression.
Well, okay, then that, that can be.
I can't speak for the entire board though.
So, so there could be a branch. Okay. So, and by that I mean, either in total, we agree to go ahead and fund it. But all last, all following years is budgeted, whatever the mix is between the town, village. A branch in that could be a partial of the LDC funding, the village funding, if they go ahead and do it. Then all years after that, it's paid for. Because I think nobody here disagrees that they want the position and they want it now. And, and it may be too late already for our tourist season by the time you are paid, get a person, get them spun up, whatever, but it's worth trying. And if, and if we're all in agreement with that, then let's just sit down, let's work the money.
Let me, let me ask this. I know our best practice is always done in our FPD. Patty Bach was here last meeting. Yeah, and we, and we chatted afterward and in discussions, and she's got four or five people that she knows are interested. What if we waive the RFP to expedite this thing? I, I know it's not what we've agreed to or what we've done in the past, but it might get us there quicker. Don't throw it out there. Isn't a priority, I mean, is it like down to three things? The, the event position, the economic development position and the marketing destination. There's like three buckets and we have to prioritize.
I don't know, really.
Not necessarily on the money, because to me, this score is the most important thing by far.
So the, so the position is the events promoter. That's largely what we're talking about. Then it's our RFP that we're currently doing for a study, right? And I'm developed focused. And then the discussion will be, do we stop that and actually go to a marketing destination?
Right, I understand that.
So, yeah, right now, we're talking about a position for the cultural, uh, the event.
Right, right.
So I think we need to decide, I think it's, everybody's in agreement that we want this position. And I think we need to decide if the LDC wants to house this position, or if we want to ask the chamber to house this position.
Yeah, so it's community tourism and events promoter. So most of that falls back. That's my, listen, we agree, if it goes to the LDC, we'll support it because we need it. So we'll do whatever we have to do to make it work. But when you look at the position, it's community tourism event promoter. Who really uses that?
So our discussion with, is it, is it Patty Bach?
Yeah.
So, and I asked explicitly, because my concern about having it housed within the chamber would be kind of take on the culture of the chamber. And I don't mean that in a negative way. Um, because the, the way it was when I first came on this board was to go ahead and be promoted on the website and social media. Largely was kind of a pay-to-play, crudely put. But basically, if you were a chamber member and everything like that, those are the things that went into like what's happening and, uh, website, et cetera, et cetera. And that's not really our charter. Our charter is really Kate Vincent.
Economic development. We have somebody in the chamber doing that.
Correct. And so basically, she assured us this position, regardless of the pay-to-play type thing. Their job is go ahead and do all things Kate Vincent. So we were assured for that. So to me, if that's the case, then to me, I'm not really wedded in the chamber or the LDC. It's really more the function of the position if they are.
But I mean, my, here's my question, just to correct that conversation or get clarity. Um, so two things that I'm a part of, the Arts Council and the, the lighthouse, right? In order for us to do things with the chamber, we had to become members. The LDC, we have to become members. The things that are going on Facebook, and by the way, Ariel's doing a great job, those are for members. So, so the problem.
We're not replacing her position.
No, no, I, I agree that. But what I'm saying is, is that the chamber's mission is to support its members. Where ours is economic development for Cape Vincent. So we have a broader mission. And I understand this, you know, promote, but if, if we have events that some organization is not part of the chamber. I would expect this permission, this position to promote them.
Of course.
But if it went to the chamber, that's contrary to your mission. And, and I understand that, right? I mean, you, it is a pay-to-play and that hasn't changed.
And I think that was Woody's, if or Al's concern.
Yeah.
You know, would, would people misunderstand the position? Well, why would I pay dues if we're going to get promoted anyway?
Right.
I think that was part of his aim. It, it would take additional communication if it was housed at the chamber. But again, whatever everybody's comfortable with.
And that's what we answered. However, it's going to work. Our position is going to be here. We're going to support it. Jim, do you?
The other thing I want to mention, and maybe, I haven't.
The other thing I just, the other thing I want to mention, and maybe, I haven't been involved in other conversations, so maybe it's been discussed, but you guys are discussing doing an RFP, is this person gonna be a contractor or an employee? And, and if you have five people in mind, are they willing to take care of insurance and all the other things that you require to take the position, if they're just individuals and they don't have a sole proprietor, an LLC, or something to, to do that from a contractual position? I mean, like me, you require me to have million dollars insurance, and I do my own social securities, like. So are these people you have in mind willing to do that, or in a position to do that?
I don't know who the people are, so I can't answer it.
But I, I think, I think we, we, we don't have the setup to have an employee, so they would have to be a contractor. And I think, again, business rules, if we skip the RFP and have people apply, they still have to follow through with those things. We, they have to have the liability insurance.
Which is why we did Casey the way we did her and ran her through.
Right, so that she's a town.
So she's a town employee.
Right.
And I know Paul doesn't want to do that, yet.
So that would be one of the things, I know, maybe you were trying to say something about it.
Jim, Jim, do you, we, we haven't heard from you.
Well, probably just because I'm listening to the thing back and forth, and I was, I was a little concerned at the very beginning, but I think there might be a way out of this, I was concerned at the beginning that when there's no finance, there's no romance. You know, it's a basic thing in life, and especially so in business. And the vision of the money, it's a little different than I thought it was gonna be like that before. But nonetheless, a lot of times, in, in my profession, we're brought in in situations where there are incredible stalemates, and things need to get done. And some of it in tourism or promotion, and some of it in other events and that type of thing. And I think the real miracle of the day is how effective digital propagation is in social media, and some paid media, which is relatively inexpensive. I actually think it's something that even if you went through this RFP process and got who you wanted for whatever it was gonna be, both marketing destination or actual promotion, I don't think that could get done in any time that could be helping this year at all, frankly. However, I think there is this thing that you can do right now, and it's the thing we do when everybody's stuck. We sometimes call it irreverently, oil-eating amoeba, which is, you go and you basically market mostly digitally, through digital propagation, some paid, but you get, I, I know this is gonna sound reckless, but you get these students, college students, who might be majoring in a lot of these things, especially, especially only their ability to churn content online, and churn it as directed, and directed means an editor, and an editor means we know what Cape Vincent is. I know it sounds like it's the inside world, talking to the inside world again, but, you know, I've been up here forty years. I think there's only two things that can be marketed right now that's different from anything that's nearby us. That's, we're the only US community on the river that's in the lake. We can, we can market Lake Ontario, for whatever that means, whether it's boats, or fish, or something like that. But also, we're the only community that has an international ferry that's a back door either to Canada or from Canada, to the US or from the US, avoiding anyone. You're really talking about a day in Cape Vincent. You're not really marketing things, because we don't really have overnight capacities of any great degree. No disrespect to what they're trying to build and do here, right? The restaurant thing isn't that really great either, but it's enough for day visitors, where they think water. And it might be very quickly, you could find out something like boats and bikes, right? The trails that we were talking about, that's a bike issue, right? It could be quite different, right? Not sure you could ever get that done by the summer, anyway. But boats, you know, I had friends that wanted to come up, and they said, where can you buy a boat, a rent-a-boat, sorry? And honestly, this was just the other day, I didn't know how to answer it, I've been up here forty years. Is there a place to rent a boat in Cape Vincent?
No. Cut announcement. So, but I think everybody's, everybody's agreed that we want the position. So, that's cut you off here, but I think that there are a lot of good ideas, and I think that's for this person, when they get.
So I guess you have a lot of people that come and, and visit and stay.
Yeah.
Meet two weeks, a month, I mean, we're, we're full.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, and, and a lot of the Airbnb slash whatevers are helpful.
Well, well, let me just, yeah, just one postscript, I was saying, I, I'm sorry, I didn't get to the point quick enough, but I think that when you have several people under someone who can guide them on the general themes that we already know, from a lot of stuff that's in our own plan as well, and our common sense of what can be sold, and with a modest, to actually small budget for the paid side online, I think it would stimulate a lot of interest in ways that we, we might not be anticipating here. I, I, I keep calling it the miracle of propagation, because on so many things that I'm still doing and things like this, it constantly shocks me, the unintended but positive consequences that come from paid and very active churn of content. And the people who do that best are basically twenty years old to twenty-two years old, but they need an editor. And, you know, I'll say, if, I mean, I'll say if I sat with four of those people in a room for a day, if that, they would get the seminal direction on what they need to do, and then the daily production of how they need to do it. That's not very glamorous, and it's really a patchwork thing, but I'm thinking about something that maybe that you can do now, inexpensively, that does have an impact.
Thanks. So it felt to me like the consensus is the LDC would be willing to house this position, for lack of a better term. So, to, to go back to the town and the village, and I don't, I don't know, and that committee that was formed. I think the, the question that was on the table was Dan's, which was a good one, right? So I know when we did the RFP for, we have a very extensive RFP, right? Which is, you know, fifteen forms and attachment. When we did the RFP for the Small Project Fund, we didn't use the RFP form, which was for New York State. We had to use the New York State and draw a person from that list, which was skinny, let's say. So we could go out, because it is a contract position, right? We don't have a choice on how to do that. But we maybe go out with a skinnier one as a possibility.
How long did that take to come back in? I thought that was pretty fast.
Oh, we did that very quickly. I think, like, we gave, like, people two, three weeks, that was it. And, and we got them in very quickly.
And we can still get the RFP or the Patty, and she could.
Oh, right.
Give it to her, the people she's. But, and, and I think.
Throwing it out there to, you know, because everybody's, we gotta get this moving and.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we're all feeling a sense of urgency, and absolutely.
Stand it, that'd be right.
So.
So my only question is with, if the LDC houses it, is who's gonna be the main POC? And what is that person's role is gonna be in dictating work for this person? Is, I want to make sure that person that is chosen has the time and availability to do that. That's gonna be critical, and that's one of the reasons that I, like, and I don't know the chamber, that the chamber has that person either. But that's something that we need to have.
I would be willing to do that. I would be willing to, yeah, because I feel so strongly that it's needed. You know, I mean, my expert, you know, I had a minor in marketing, you know, several years ago. But, you know, I would still, you know, somebody's gonna need to manage the day-to-day. And, you know, I'd be willing to take that on.
And then other, I guess I have two questions.
But, you know, I mean, you know, as the chair, and then, you know, we could see how it goes.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you know, you guys won't be shy to say, yeah, Mary, we don't think it's going well, you gotta do this, and that, you know, that'll be great.
I mean, I do.
It might be helpful to have somebody from the chamber as well.
Right, and we collaborate, we have that monthly meeting from a collaboration perspective, and we would continue to keep that. You know, and right now, it's Ariel and Lori, but we could say, do we streamline that, you know, moving forward?
But I think that'd be critical, too, is having somebody from the chamber. And then I also want to be opposed, if they're doing ten, twenty hours a month, it's having ten hours at the chamber, so they're getting that face time, because there's all businesses and stuff that, if you guys have space, they're not.
Listen, we're very, we, we would love that, I'm pretty sure. That would, you know, because otherwise, we gotta, who do we have to go through? Well, and here's, here's the thing that, here's the thing that I would throw out. So, right now, we pay for an office, we only pay for it fifty percent of the time, right? Because we share it with the Arts Council. If we said that the, this promotions person office would be in the visitor center, right? Instead of that table, you know, work something out, then we just quit paying, because our lease is up in March. Once a month, when Casey does her Saturday thing, she does it at the visitor center. This twenty hours a month person also is in the visitor center, and then there, you know, there's that collaboration. Right, because, I mean, it's not gonna save us a boatload of money, but it would save us money, right? All we gotta do is take the sign off the door.
But the flip side will be the optics piece of it. So if we do that to save the money, just keep in the back of the mind that this is lodged in the chamber, and then us, when people walk into the chamber and see a community events promoter, or they see Casey sitting in there, people very quickly will get confused on the role of both, like, why do I have to pay? But then I have the promoter sitting right here, and I have to pay you, so just keep that in the back of your mind.
But, but the. Yeah, but the chamber's office is not open, right? I mean, you don't have anybody, Ariel sits in the back.
She's in the back.
Yes, right, so there's nobody from the chamber that sits in that, so if we said that it's a visitor center, right?
Right, as opposed to a chamber.
Right, because, because the front is a visitor center, I mean, that's what the sign says, it doesn't say Chamber of Commerce, right? It says visitor center. Yeah, so it's a visitor center. For us, you know, I would have to bring it back, but for us, we need less volunteers there, staffing.
You, I'm sorry, you.
We would need less staffing if there's a promoter there, you know. Right, you need, right, and, and what we would have to do is make sure that it's open more, right? Of course.
We've already done, we've already set our hours to be open every day, and lower hours.
Right, and you have volunteers to cover all that.
Well, we're working on it.
Yeah, well, no, but what I'm saying is that volunteers are hard, so if we had this promoter person, and then the one Saturday a month when Casey does, you, you would have somebody where you wouldn't have to have on that Saturday, because she's already going into our office.
Okay, on Saturdays.
On one Saturday a month, three hours, but it would be a coverage.
But you want that position being a tourist-facing employee.
Well, I, I think.
Ten hours out of the twenty?
Well, I think they work in the office, right? They work in the office and they answer questions as people come in, and if there's also a volunteer there, great, the volunteer is the first line of defense. But it, but it would be, this would be a person who would hear what was going on, who would, it doesn't save us a lot of money, but do we really, if, if we take this over?
I wouldn't give up that, I don't, it's way a buck and a half a mo.
No.
So, the, I think, I think where they prioritize is how many hours, we can figure it later, because I don't think that's a necessary decision. I think the decisions for tonight are basically, basically, do we want to have a certain position? Okay, basically, do they fall underneath us, regardless of where they were? Do they fall underneath the LDC or the chamber, wherever? And the third one is that we're kind of dancing around, it's basically, how do we fund it so we can move out? But I guess the fourth one is basically, are we gonna go ahead and forego the RFP process and do the skinny one?
Or do, yeah, do a skinny one.
And so those are really about the four things on the plate, the rest of the stuff is really.
Yeah.
Details.
It's details, right.
Based on the timeline that we have, you know, I think the, the most reasonable thing for us to do is to pull the economic development plan and, and push it at least a year, in both the economic and the marketing. Knowing where the money is right now, we basically recommit those funds to the tourism position, or to the promotion, the community tourism event position.
Way too much, yeah, the tourism position, go ahead.
For this, for this next year, that covers down on that, we can use some of the time that that individual has to work on the strategic plan tasks. And then in a year, we see how A, it worked, and then B, we come back and revisit it and say, okay, either this is something that it makes sense for us, or it doesn't. And then we can go back in and, you know, if we need to do, if they've accomplished some of the things, we won't need to do a economic development.
Yeah.
Process.
I think that's a good idea.
And then we don't really need to ask for any more money, we just, we're just redesignating.
And I'm thinking, if we're going local, I think we could probably get more hours, you know? You know, go for a, you know, I think what Scott's, Scott, you're thirty, thirty hours a month, right?
You're muted.
You're muted. Thirty, right?
Six to eight hours a week, so some months it's.
Right.
A month is twenty-four to thirty, some it's thirty to thirty-six.
So I think we could go, I would rather do something weekly than monthly. But again, those are details that we can work out as we, as we do the RFP. And I'm ha, so, what, so we have a motion.
I have a motion that we, we revoke the economic development RFP and redesignate the money for, or the approval for the community tourism and event position.
And I'll second it, because I thought it was such a great idea.
Can I add to, and that's that the LDC will house the marketing.
Whatever we're calling it, we gotta, we gotta streamline that name. Oh, my God, you are military, aren't you?
That's right.
CTE position.
Yes, of course, don't let the.
All right, all right, so we have a motion on the floor, did you get that wording?
Does anybody have any discussion?
Oh, yeah, does anybody have any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Okay, so the, the real question now is, so we've all agreed, I, I don't know, do we just have Pam and Dan go back and Lori and say, the LDC's willing to do this, they're gonna use existing funds for one year and expect to get following years? Does that, is that mean it's a done deal, and we need to get a subcommittee to start writing the RFP?
We're a hundred percent behind it, from the town perspective. Well, I, I mean, to answer your question short, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we need to fill out one of those forms that we?
We've already voted on it.
Yeah, we need a communication.
You already voted on it.
We already voted that if the LDC housed it, we would support it.
All right, good, that's, that makes it easier. All right, so we have a finance committee meeting.
On the fifth.
On the fifth. So that would be Warren, Carol, Dave, and they invited me. We could, in that meeting, attempt to create an RFP for this position, and then circulate it.
Can we bring the chamber, Lori into it, if she's willing?
Yeah, well, what I thought, if we, we would draft it, and then we would send it out to everybody, including the chamber, to say,
Okay.
what are we missing, you know, but to get us off, you know, a piece of paper, we'll use the start of what Christine drafted as part of it.
Yeah, that could be shortened considerably.
Yeah, well, and it was written more like a job description, so I think we can, we can net it out. But Dana, are you okay, because you're terrifying, if we do that? Because I think the, I mean, basically, we're just gonna say, what are we presenting at the joint meeting, right?
Yeah.
Speaking of joint meeting, if you guys could go back and ask your boards if they would like to attend our April meeting, we, according to our bylaws, we're supposed to have a three-way meeting in April.
That would be the tenth, it looks like.
Yeah, and see if that, if you guys can do that, just kind of give me a heads up, and then I'll do the formal invitation out and forward the Zoom on and all that stuff.
Well, we should see Ariel.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, and they're, they're open, they're open meetings.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so now on that, so we, we've agreed on that, the economic development, we have to close out. So we need to send something back to the, I think, four groups to let them know. Scott, we need to turn it off in the contractor thing, and you put that in for us. So could you please say we're deciding not to award it at this time?
Yeah, I can go on and do that.
Thank you, all right, so then that closes that out.
Funding.
Right, so when.
We have not decided to fund it.
Right, so the question is, how are we gonna do that?
So, really, I think we have about two choices, which is refund it until it's carried over from next year with the deal that we're talking about. Or, the other one is, if the village owns a part of it, then it's a split village LDC. Those are about the two options that we've heard, kind of. Those are about the two options that we've heard kind of tonight that's possible.
Right, right. So I guess my question would be, when we put the RFP out though, do we just put it out and say, this is exactly what we want? And then people come back and say, this is how much it's going to cost, just like economic development. And then, then we have to figure out how to do that. And that's kind of the process, right?
You have to use a range. You don't think we should throw a range?
We haven't in the past. We haven't in the past. Now, on the skinny down one that we used with Alma, I mean, she knew it was, they all knew that, you know, it's three hundred K from New York forward and ten percent goes to them. I mean, so they knew, we, I, we could, Dan, I don't see why not.
I mean, if they've got four or five people that they know, they're going to realize that they're not going to commit it forty-five, fifty, sixty, seventy grand. But if you don't put, I mean, if you go globally, you could, you could get.
I guess that, you know, I mean, in the past, we put it on the contractor thing. That's how we got the ones for economic development.
I think that if we notate that they have to be in the C, it's not a virtual remote position. That's going to also cut down the amount that people are expecting because it's local. You know, I mean, I could see if it's, if this is a virtual thing, we get all sorts of.
Yeah. No, no, I think we know we want this person.
Right. So I think that needs to be in the RFP.
I agree.
Is, is RFP the same thing as like competitive bidding? Is that, those are two different terms?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah, this is basically, we're putting out and saying, we want to, we want this CTE person. I'm short in that title, anyway.
But don't say it around people who play football.
So, but, but, you know, we want this position, this is how much time it is, this is what it looks like, this is the skills we're looking for. And then they come back and say, I have those, this is why I have these, and this is how much it would cost you to hire me to do it.
And the position started yesterday.
Right. How, how long do you think it would take?
Well, we have the meeting next week. So, I mean, if I was going to do a high level project plan off the top of my head, um, I would say we create a draft. I might work on that a little bit because I have the skinny form. So we have something to throw darts at. Um, and then we would pass that after our finance meeting, we would pass that out to the largest group, asking a target date to get back to us. And then we, then we.
I said we get a target date and we vote on it. If, if, if we're all agreement, we can vote on it on the thirteenth and go forward because that's our next meeting.
Yep.
And then, so I say, if, I don't know what you guys turn around and leave, but it's tight, but we might be able to do it.
Do it on the fifth and we come up with a ninety percent solution was, we just send it out.
Right. We send it out. So all the work smithing has happened. So we're just voting on it.
And I, and I, I mean, I wouldn't worry about sharing with the town board. I don't know about the village board, we're, we're not going to. You guys in the chamber, the ones that really are going to be.
So we plan on voting on the thirteenth? Well, when you say voting, you're voting on the candidate? No. On the fifth, we will.
And I think what we're going to want to do is, you know, we'll put out something in the Thousand Island Sun, which would probably cost us a little money, to say, you know, we'll try to write it as an article, see if we can get it through, but probably not. Like we have when we've had an open board seat and say, you know, we're actively looking for RFPs and we'll put a target date on it, you know?
We can change our website too.
With the, yeah.
So the, so the only reason I ask is because, so you put it out and everything like that.
Yeah.
What this is going to be, I think it's going to be over twenty K with me, my guess. Yeah. So that means you have to come back to the board and then the board has to go and select it. So it's another meeting with a core. And so just keep that in the back of your mind, either we're going to do a special one because again, sense of urgency or, you know, line up with the April meeting.
But the April meetings are joint meetings. That's our.
Do we want to wait a week to, to approve the RFP? Send the RFP out as soon as you guys are done with it.
Yeah, we don't have to vote. I mean, if everybody, if everybody reads it, right? Because I don't think people.
Expending money. We don't need to have a vote. It's a.
Yeah.
We've agreed that we want the position. This is our process. Right. Yeah.
Read the RFP and by Friday, five o'clock.
Right.
Forever hold your peace.
The, the only vote that has to happen with the core is whatever the selectee is and or an alternate or two is basically the board has to meet. Beyond that, we've already agreed. This is just.
How, how long are RFPs usually open, Scott? I mean, that's more of a question for you.
I mean, it depends, like, some, for, for this, I mean, two or three weeks would be fine, use, or less even. Like some programs require you to do longer, like, uh, funding programs make you do it for four weeks or more, six weeks, depending on what the project is. But for something like this, I mean, companies should be able to reply within a two or three week period. I mean, there is some work to bring together proposals, so.
Yeah. I'd say if we get it out by the twelfth, that gives us a little time if we need it. And so it's the latest date is March twelfth and we close it on April first. We could have them in and potentially review and vote on the tenth at our next meeting.
Right. We could for the joint, right?
Right.
Invite them at six to five thirty.
Exactly. Yeah.
But you're hiring people to do marketing, so they should be able to put up together a proposal pretty quick.
All right. So, so who, um, who wants to send a note to the four economic development folks to say we postponed? I mean, I, I can't if you, if you don't feel comfortable, um.
It's starting to time right now.
Yeah.
Kind of uncomfortable.
I mean.
Is it just those companies and the spreadsheets that we're writing? Do we have the, I guess there's POCs on those though.
Yeah. Yeah. I think just, you know, that, you know, that the board is evaluated and that we're, you know, we will keep you in mind if, you know, when we open it up again.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
I can do it here.
Yeah.
Do a budget.
Yep.
I might have you proofread it because mine might be a little blunt. One's okay.
Are you saying that I have power?
I've got, I've got a few decades of just very terse and blunt language. It, it doesn't translate well sometimes.
All right. So I think we're down to privilege from the floor. But thank you for joining. Do you have any, anything from you?
This has been interesting. I'm glad I showed up.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I didn't want to happen, you know, with the trail project. I think the article was a little misleading. It looked like it was in your backyard.
Well, yeah, I actually made a copy of it. It was, it was pretty much a disaster, uh, dealing with the Chamber of Commerce. I don't want to. I was going to take this after the meeting, uh, but, but first I, I contacted the Chamber of Commerce to say, you know, could you put something else there? I had something else on Thousand Island Times, uh, you know, to promote the action, you know, trail and have my wife on scene and all that stuff. And so I contacted, uh, the chamber and said, um, could you do the same thing that I had on Thousand Island, you know? And they said, well, you're not a member. So I said, well, I'm part of the LDC board, you know, and I went ahead and sent a copy of the, the executive summary that I would be presenting to the town in a few weeks, you know, so, I mean, I don't know what the procedures are, but this is what I have. So she went ahead and put something together and it was just, it was wrong from A to Z.
Who put it together for you?
I guess, I don't know, the person.
Was it Ariel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, because they, yeah, they have it and the trail begins, you know, in my front yard instead of, uh, Burke Rock. It was just, it was a little.
Where was this put? I'm sorry.
What's happening?
Continue what's happening. For the, for March?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I assume that it's, it's the, uh. So here, we'll see you next week. Okay, take care. Thank you, everybody.
Is, would it be located where the original waterline is?
Yes, yeah. All, all along the waterline, yeah. From, you know, the town to pass Action Flat. Yeah. Which is eight miles and there's the water line and there's two or four, um, or whatever that must be, you have to deal with. So that's an ongoing process. But what's happening with the goal? Misread everything. It said it was only be a four mile trail, seven, eight mile trail, and one would be multi, you know, functional trail. They did, they just said cross-country and they took a picture of Marty Mason's property instead of. You know, going on scenes where we, you know, where we had it. Yeah, it wasn't just that.
So she didn't, maybe what probably should have happened is she should have asked you for the article that you wanted.
Well, I did. I did that first and then it was like, no, you're not a member of, uh, chamber. So I can't do that. So that adds a problem to it. And so then I went ahead and said, well, I'm part of the LDC and she slapped that together and it's just, it's just completely all wrong, but it's not the end of the world, I think. There was somebody wrote it. I'm, I'm.
I don't know. Right. That's what I think.
I, I don't know if, I was worried to hear of it or not, but I think it was in the December town board meeting. There was some discussion about maintaining the water line itself, the mowing. And the development authority is no longer interested in doing it themselves. So they want to pay usually town municipalities to do it. So their idea was to, to have each municipality take their share, move down order and, and do it. And they would reimburse them for that. County Cape Vincent, uh, decided, yeah, we'd like to do that. We'll do it. We got the equipment. Let's just do it. We get paid for it. Why not? And then the town of Lime has said they're not interested. So the county Cape Vincent said, well, then we'll build the town of Lime too, if we can get paid for it. So that, the last I knew, the town of Cape Vincent was going to mow all the way from the village to, the town of Brownville Line.
Right.
Have you ever aware of that?
Uh, no, I, I did talk to Marty Mason. He owns like three miles that stretch. And right now he's got nephew mowing, so.
Well, this was all discussed in December.
I was unaware of all of that.
Yeah, that's why I thought I'd come just to make you aware of the. And I'm not sure if this changed since then. I was kind of hoping Dan would, would be able to help with.
Just confused.
Well, I'm doing a presentation next week so that I can talk about, you know, the trail being used and all that stuff. So, so I can bring those issues up at that.
They're going to have a bunch of questions about, okay, what do we got to do? Do we have to do any more than the mowing? Whatever, signage, whatever.
So I can't really get anything in conversation. I think the lane there was too busy to use their property.
It sounds like, wow.
Basin and a few others.
Are they mowing the trail? Is that, I don't understand what we're talking about.
Oh. Trail gets mowed.
Because the water line is underneath it. So it's a maintenance for that water.
Sorry.
They get paid by Dan.
Well, I know they hunt on Marty Mason's land too. They hunt back.
It can't be for the whole thing though, because Marty owns some of that.
I ride over there. You have to know whether there are, there is a lot of hunting that goes on back there.
And I really don't know. That doesn't make sense to me that Marty would mow part of the regional water.
Well, he does.
I'm pretty sure Marty owns that.
Yeah.
Marty owns it. It's, it, it, and I think bank or I don't know, maybe, I don't know, something, he owns that land though. Even though the water line and that he owns it.
Right.
So that's.
The developmental authority only has a right of way for maintenance of the water line. They do not have like a recreational right of way or anything else. So they, they only have a right of way to go on that for maintenance.
Thanks, Scott. That clarifies it.
Could get rather complicated then.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Well, anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to.
Oh, I know what I saw and I saw they put our address down instead of Burke Rock.
Oh, come on.
So now we know where to go though.
Come to my house. We'll have hot chocolate and, uh, some buns for you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Bert? All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. We got a motion. We got a second. Thank you all very much for your time. That wasn't too bad.